First one up is Mr. Berrios.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Derek Berrios, I'm the Director of the Lampasses County Higher Education Center, or LCHEC, as we like to call it. I'd like to thank the City Council and Mayor Pierce for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you here today. At LCHEC, our continuing mission is to provide access to affordable, quality education and job training to Lampasses and the surrounding area. With that in mind, we are proud to announce that we celebrated our 13th anniversary in March of this year. We could have not achieved this milestone without the continuous support of the community and our partners. Over the past 13 years, which Seb and I have been Director, LCHEC has provided training, community education, and higher education to a broad spectrum of our community and region. Since 2010, over 1,100 Central Texas College students have taken courses at our facility. Since 2013, over 670 students have been certified through our allied healthcare training programs. Those students are averaging a starting wage of $14.50 an hour on average. 650 students have attended our adult community education courses, and we have provided over 900 children since 2012 with educational and entertaining summer courses as part of our annual College for Kids, which we're actually currently doing. We do it throughout the month of June. Overall, more than 3,300 students have passed through our doors since 2010. My goal as Director has been to make sure that LCHEC becomes a self-sustaining entity. However, our main goal is to provide affordable workforce training to our community and our region. Therefore, we cannot arbitrarily raise fees whenever we have a shortfall. To do so would price us out of the market and would be counterproductive to our goals. We must keep in mind the ability of our community members to pay for the training that we're offering. I will continue to seek ways to trim expenses while increasing revenue, but donations from our invested partners are a key part of LCHEC's ability to continue its mission. We continue our strategic partnerships with Advent Health, Lily Springs, and Baylor Scott &amp; White. Our intention is to create additional partnerships with the appropriate organizations and facilities to guarantee a steady stream of income and students. And we continue to look for additional partners in the various fields which we provide training for. We are confident in our belief that LCHEC is an economic driver for our community and our region. We would also like to remind our fellow citizens of the other opportunities provided by LCHEC. We are the only institution offering GED preparation in the 35-mile radius. Dozens of our fellow citizens have benefited from this free program, which is in conjunction with Central Texas College. As for our workforce students, we provide after-training services for them, such as frequently updated job boards, resume writing, and interview preparation. Our goal is to make sure those who worked hard and completed their training have all the support they need to find employment in their trained field. Before I go, I'd like to thank the City Council for the opportunity to speak here. We ask for your continued support in the form of a contribution at the prior level. Without the support of the county, the city, and the overall community, it would be close to impossible to provide the variety of services and programs that we offer at LCHEC. I thank you for your past and hopefully your continued support. You have any questions for me? All right, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. And at this time, a discussion and presentation from the Lampasses County Museum Board. Ms. Carol Wright, and I don't see Ms. Davis here. No? You're it.
Good evening, I'm Carol Wright, and I've been a museum volunteer for over 20 years. I love the history of Lampasses, the city and the county, as most of us do. The one thing that we're very concerned about is how we're maintaining our status at the museum. It does cost a lot for us to operate. If you received your letter in your packet, I believe it explains a little bit about what some of our expenses are, some of our time that we spend there, and we are diligently asking for your support and your help. We do not receive any aid at all from the City of Lampasses nor the County of Lampasses. We sustain ourselves with our gift shop and our donations, and we are in need of funds. I do have some statistics that I can give you for the... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We've several of our bills that we've had, we thought it might be of interest to some of you to look at what our expenses are between running the air conditioner. We're also well-known, we've discovered, that we have a clean restroom, and we have a lot of people who stop in to use our restrooms from time to time. But we're here to ask you for your help. This is, if you're not aware of it, the 150th birthday of the City of Lampasses, and we have T-shirts that we're advertising the birthday of Lampasses. We also have a button, and we'd like to give everyone one of our buttons to please wear.
Yes. Thank you.
Glad to give them out. We'd appreciate if you'd wear that, because it shows support of our museum and of the birthday of Lampasses. Does anyone have any questions you'd like to ask? How many of you have been to the museum? Okay, I'm glad. Makes us feel a little bit better.
Do you guys raise some support on your music venues that you have?
We strictly ask for donations, and the donations went to the musicians.
Okay.
Some of them turned around and handed them back to us as a donation to the museum, but for the most part, we do not charge an entry fee. We don't feel that that would be a good thing for us to do. We'd like to offer the history of Lampasses to anyone that comes through. I also would just like to briefly address the motel hotel tax, because we do bring a lot of people in from out of town to visit our museum, and we send them to restaurants, we send them all over the place that we recommend that they might want to go try a meal here or buy gas here. So we do a lot with our out-of-town guests, and we have, every week, we have people calling wanting to know how to get there, what does it cost, that kind of thing, to show an interest. And I would love to see all of our citizens in Lampasses showing interest in our museum. Thank you.
I was going to ask you one more question. Do you have any attendance?
Yes, we have everyone that we can catch to register, and we keep those.
Okay.
And they're on file.
Do you know how about, kind of approximately, how many that is?
Well, some days we have three and some days we have 30.
Okay.
We're open only on Saturday, Friday and Saturdays from 10 to 4, and by request, and we get a lot of those people calling in. We're going to be there, you know, one of my favorite is my mother's grandmother's next-door neighbor's brother's aunt, you know, lived in Lampasses at one time. Can you tell me something about her? We're like, we do our best, we try to help, but... Oh, yes, yes, we do have a lot of children that come, especially from Hannah Springs. They can't get buses to bring them from the other school, but we do, they do walk down from Hannah Springs, and it's a crazy time, especially when the school is getting ready to dismiss, and the teachers are kind of like, you know, what do we do with these kids? They bring them to us. And the children, really, especially our animal exhibit, they just really thrive on that, so. Any other questions? Okay, thank you all. We appreciate your consideration.
All right, the next one up, a discussion regarding the lap swim fees.
Mayor and Council, this was placed on the agenda as a follow-up to the discussion we had at the previous meeting about lap swim fees at the city pools. I think, at the request of the city manager, we've got a few options if you... Sorry. I don't really have any comments, but I'm looking forward to comments from the council and consideration from the council and what you recommendation from the council. I think at the last meeting, we were directed to, so we've, currently in the ordinance is $40 a month, not $40 for eight visits like we previously thought. So I think that at $40 a month, they've got the potential to be there 16 to 18 visits. I think when they were here, the group was here at the last meeting, they were asking us to go back to $250 per visit, which was $25 for 10 visits. And at an average of 16 visits, 40 bucks a month, that is $250 a visit, so. Question?
A 40 a month. A 40 a month, I like, yeah, I think we just stick with what's in the ordinance and go with that.
It is, it is on a regular agenda for action.
Okay. The other issue I had was that we finalized the noodles and the flotation devices, the several citizens who expressed concern. Okay.
Yep, that's, that's out of our hands. It's, it's
Okay.
It's in Texas administrative code. It's not something we made up, so.
All right. Thank you.
Chris, does this $40 a month, does it help, I guess it helps some with overtime pay or extra pay? We have to pay lifeguards that come in early, but does it help a whole lot?
The pools are not a revenue source for the city. I mean, you could charge $100 for 10 visits, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make up for what it costs to run the pools, so. I think the 40 a month, though, is more in line with what they were asking us to charge and, and would accommodate those that are on a fixed income.
And that's just the admission to go swim lap?
That's what it costs to get in the pool for regular swims, so, for seniors and kids.
About how many swimmers is that, Chris?
I'm sorry?
How many swimmers, or how many members is that?
Lap swimmers?
Yes.
About a dozen.
A dozen, okay.
Just one important clarification. I think the last council meeting, we discussed not doing a calendar month, but doing basically 30 days from the point of purchase. So we would abide by that based on the discussion from the previous meeting.
Any more questions? Nope. Thank you all.
Discussion regarding July the 17th, 2023 Council Workshop Session. This is a draft agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up to the meeting we've been talking about actually for probably 45 days or so, or since the election, in terms of a roundtable workshop-type format for council. I just want to be clear with council, we don't, don't want you to get the impression that we've made any assumptions about what you want on the agenda. We want to make sure that we meet council's expectations in terms of this meeting. However, I felt like we could at least get a starting point, and certainly if all eight of these items are scrapped and we go a different direction, that's council's prerogative, and we certainly understand that. When we originally started talking about this meeting, and then we combined it with perhaps a look at the New Hope Baptist Church, as well as the Historic Colored School reconvening to the Calvert Building, and maybe a little further discussion on those two public facilities and others. I, I took the liberty of maybe including a discussion about meeting format. Are there things within the governance policy that you would like to see change? What are your short-term objectives? I think our primary short-term objective at this point is budget, but it may be a follow-up to substandard housing. It may be taking a look at growth and what else we need to be planning for as it relates to what your expectations are, as well as what's in the comprehensive plan. We also wanted to take the opportunity, or at least offer you the possibility of taking the opportunity to reviewing some of our projects. We've got a lot going on from a number of different funding sources, so that was put on this tentative agenda for your consideration. The last thing I'll say is that you, you don't have to decide tonight. We've got another meeting between now and the meeting on July 17th, so it may be something that we'll, we could bring back to you on the, the 10th of July and take a look at one more time, or give you the opportunity to think about what you would like to have that on that agenda for the 17th at that time. But I'll be happy to answer any questions, and certainly staff is interested in your input.
I, I think it looks good. I think it's covering everything we have requested in the past. Like, only thing, like you mentioned, substandard, follow up on that, just to see where we are, and then go from there, maybe to the next level, like with business, substandard business, and follow up on that. That's the only thing I would add.
Thank you, Councilman Keel.
I'd like to see the city's staff's ideas for, to generate revenue from these, or how to generate revenue from these two buildings if we were to do something with them.
And that would include the Hostess House?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? You guys good? Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's going to conclude our workshop, and that was a quick one. I think we probably should take a 10-minute break.
Motion to adjourn workshop.
Second.
We're waiting on a couple of other people to come, come in for the, for the... Okay.
Yes, sir. On the floor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, at this time, we're going to call our regular session to order, and all rise.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag, let the nations lead Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Have a seat.
We have a special recognition this evening. The nomination was received by Mr. Joey McQueen. Julie is our outgoing CTE Director in the high school, and in the last four years, under Julie's direction, our LHS CTE program has grown to offer nine programs. The programs have grown by creating certifications and job opportunities for LISD students. Judy was, Julie was instrumental in getting the new CTE building built and making the program what it is today. And I personally have had the opportunity over the last couple of years to work with Julie and see her in action with our creating Badger Builders. And I've never seen anybody as faithful. We've, we've met almost for the last two years every morning, every Thursday morning at 7:00 a.m., and I don't think she came for the food, because I never did see her eat very much. But she was always there, offering just her advice and, and help guiding our Badger Builders, and I can't imagine what the other eight programs have, have been blessed with you. And Julie, I just, I just want to thank you, and I, it's, as Mayor for the City of Lampasses and on behalf of the City Council, it's our honor to recognize Julie Salvino as the Misty Talbert Community Champion. Thank you, Julie, and if you'll come up at this time. Next up on the list, a citizen's comment. Any citizen who desires to address the City Council on a matter not included in the agenda may do so at this time. The City Council may not deliberate on this item presented under this agenda item, and we don't have anybody. Citizen's comment. Any citizen who desires to address the city on a matter that's included on the agenda. Ms. Andrea Lawson. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to speak to the pools again, and for last ditch effort here for the lap swim, I would really like for the council to consider just doing the 10 for 25, a punch card, because it is an increase. The 40 for a month is an increase if you are not able to come the four times that it's offered to swim. And so if you can only come on the weekend or something, that, that increases the price of the individual lap swim quite a bit if you do 40 for a month. And we're talking about, like, about a dozen people, and mostly elderly, that like to work out when it's not so crazy and, and crowded at the pool. So I, I'm, I'm just not quite sure why you're increasing this price when everything else has stayed the same, because last year it was 24 for 10, and it was a punch card that you could use whenever you wanted to. And, and I just, these are people that try to stay healthy, and I just, we started this program during COVID, and that, that they, that the older people could work out safely, and I would like, I would just like to see it continued. So this is my last ditch effort to appeal to you all to take that into consideration. And it's really only four times a week on the agenda. I think it's wrong. There is no swim, lapse from time Thursdays from 6:00 to 7:00. It's only from 11, 11:00 to 12:00, just before the pool opens. Okay? And then, in light of, I have another thing that is, it is on my heart, in light of the recent drowning of a, of a four-year-old in a, in a park in Gatesville, at a, at a pool in Gatesville. I have some safety concerns. I have worked at Hancock Springs before, and I know that we've had staffing problems this year with the pools, which have resulted in two assistant managers not being lifeguard-trained and certified. And we have a lot of guards at the pools now, and that's working all pretty well, but the supervision is lacking. And I'm, and Hancock is a, is a crazy pool with a lot of people, on the weekends especially. And last weekend, we have some guards that are, that are, that have a couple of years already experience, and they can, they can handle this, but last, last weekend, there was all new guards there. And there was, we had a situation where there was 100 people in the pool and the, and two people watching. That is against regulations. Every, you need one guard for every 25 people. So there is a lack of supervision from the manager or from, from whoever is in charge there, and I just, I, I just feel it is not, we are not keeping our public safe, if we're not supervising the, both pools, the guards, the new guards, they, they, they're not, they're looking at their nails. They have to be supervised by somebody who knows what they're looking for. So I just, I, I don't know if it's you that I need to address, but the city in general, that we need to have some supervision from the manager. We have a manager that is certified. She needs to be able to supervise both pools, which she hasn't been doing. And Hancock is crazy busy on the weekends, and, and it's, it's really posing, if there is not a good safety strategy in place, it is a scary place. And I do not ever want to have this happen here in Lampasses, that some, that we will, that a kid drowns because of lack of supervision. Then I have one more point I wanted to make about, about the Moonlight Swim. And I was not personally at the Moonlight Swim, but my daughter was, and she has been working for the pools for the last seven years, as a lifeguard and as an assistant manager. And I just wanted, and she can't be here today, I just wanted to read what she, what her concerns are there. The staff at the Moonlight Swim event demonstrated a lack of preparedness. The staff managed to find small lights, however, the middle of the pool was still completely obscured, making it impossible to see even a few feet below the water surface. Furthermore, only two to three guards were responsible. Furthermore, only two to three guards were responsible for monitoring the water during the event with limited supervision. In the past, successful Moonlight Swims have employed a more rigorous safety approach, including a minimum of six guards on duty with a total of 12 to 15 lifeguards and three additional managers overseeing the water. This recent event did not provide a safe environment as lifeguards would have had no means to detect a drowning incident, given that many drownings occur without visible struggle. Additionally, while floating devices were permitted exclusively for this event, they have been banned for daytime use due to obstructed visibility of the pool bottom. However, in this case, in the case of this event where the pool bottom was completely invisible from 9:00 P.M. until the events end, allowing flotation devices posed a significant safety risk. As a former lifeguard, I am deeply concerned about the patron's safety and I have received similar expressions of concerns from others. In the past, we have implemented additional measures such as spotlights pointed toward the middle of the pool as well as splashlights and headlamps for the lifeguards. Hancock Pool presents unique challenges for nighttime swims as there are no built-in pool lights and minimal lighting outside of the pool. Therefore, the staff must adequately plan and prepare in advance to address these challenges and ensure the safety of the patrons. And we feel very strongly about this and we love the pool. I am there every time I get the chance. And I'm just, I just want you all to know that whoever is in charge needs to better supervise and prepare and communicate. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Discussion and possible actions concerning the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 12th, 2023?
I didn't see any corrections approved, motion to approve minutes.
Second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Any opposed? Nope. Discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of an ordinance to amend Appendix A Fee Schedule, Chapter 38, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 1, Fees and Permit Inspection and License.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance to amend Appendix A Fee Schedule, Chapter 38, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 1, Fees for Permits, Inspections and License as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 4.0. Boards and Department Report, Monica.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I believe everyone knows me, but my name is Monica Wright and I am the I.T. Director for the City of Lampasas. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting my annual report to you via a short video that I put together. It will hopefully give you a better visual representation and understanding of our department. At the end of the video, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is a pleasure to be presenting our annual information systems department report to you tonight. There are some new members on council, so I wanted to give a brief introduction to our technology team. Our department consists of the I.T. Director, myself, Assistant Administrator, Kristia Sabato, and T.S.M. Consulting Incorporated, in which we contract out for 24/7 remote support and consulting for our network as well as criminal justice information systems audits. The I.T. Department strives to provide complete technology-based support for all city departments 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in the most cost-effective manner to facilitate reliability, availability, and security of the city's network. Our department develops and maintains system priorities, ongoing information technology planning, and drive for accuracy. The department pursues and initiates improvement projects to bring about positive information system changes for the city. In case you don't know, we are located in the old City Council chambers between Municipal Court and the Police Department. The I.T. Building is our central location for our servers and our AT&amp;T fiber circuit. Our department moved to this location in 2019 after some small renovations and maintenance were done. In our building, we have a secure temperature-regulated server room with storage, a training area, a designated area for building out computers, one restroom, and two offices. Our building remains locked and secured at all times to meet CEGIS compliance. We provide hardware and software support for approximately 97 computers, 57 laptops, 70 printers, 22 switches, nine credit card readers, 16 wireless access points, 52 Verizon jetpacks, 36 cell phones, 20 security cameras, three firewalls, 16 tablets, and 30 closed software applications. Our job duties include verifying all server and PC backups, performing Windows updates to all servers and computers, performing hardware firmware updates as they become available, applying security patches and virus updates on all devices on the network, performing routine maintenance on hardware, responding to all help desk tickets 24/7, and managing city website and social media. Other duties include continued research on hardware and software applications and security threats, completing documentation for all software and hardware configuration installs, attending meetings, performing hardware and software installs, and deploying annual security awareness training to all employees and city council per House Bill 3834. The state DIR training program that we use allows our department to send out simulated phishing tests to see if malicious attachments in emails are open and/or links are clicked on. When a user opens an attachment or clicks a link, it allows our department to see who that employee was and provide them with further education on cybersecurity and keeping our network safe. The most important duty of our department is maintaining a secure network. The city firewall alerts us via email with any suspicious activity and stops the suspicious activity immediately. Throughout the year, we work on project planning and identifying budget needs. We attend TAG ITM Conference annually, renew CEGIS certification for compliance, attend online webinars and trainings to stay current with the latest technology and practices. And we also manage all city phones and Verizon jetpacks. Projects that we have identified, budgeted, and completed this fiscal year include 19 total replacement computers, two replacement police department servers, four replacement police patrol top books, two 24-port managed switches, three 16-port managed switches, and two 52-port managed switches. We also configured and installed upgraded antivirus software on all devices with advanced endpoint security protection and monitoring. And due to slow, limited internet speeds at the golf course, we may have upgraded their service provider over to NextLink and upgraded their golf system software. Other FY 2223 projects completed include configuration and installation of new I.T. help desk software, configuration and installation of remote access software solution for staff. We also worked with the electric department and vendor on remote management for Electric SCADA, worked with vendor to install ceiling microphones in council chambers. We also disposed of outdated and broken I.T. equipment per state law and installed security cameras in multiple departments. Incomplete or in progress projects include the Police Department Cradle Point routers, Tyler Technologies Executime Time Management Solution, and No Before Security Awareness Training has not been reported to the state. It is not due until August 31st. Oftentimes, it's hard to understand what our department is presenting or even talking about for that matter. I myself find it hard at times to come in front of council and explain technology needs. Because our department's work isn't always as visual as others, I wanted to show council some photos of our technology equipment. Pictured in this slide is four out of 11 of our server racks. Look confusing? Well, actually, it can be. But with proper labels, documentation, planning, and diagrams, it begins to all make sense. Let's talk about our fiber network. Over the years, our department, with the support of City Council, have been able to slowly expand our fiber network in phases. City buildings connected to our fiber network include City Hall, I.T. Department, Calvert Municipal Building, Police Department, Fire Department, Municipal Court, Streets, Electric, Collection Center, Water Wastewater, Animal Shelter, and the last one was the library. City departments not on our fiber network include the golf course, cemetery, the Sports 580, Hannah Springs Pool, Hancock Springs Pool, and the Parks Barn. So what can you do to stay connected? Follow our city Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. If you would like to receive emails and text messages regarding any news, events, health notices, bids, and employment that is posted to our city website, you can do that by visiting the city homepage and clicking on Stand Form and Providing Your Information. You can also sign up for SitCOT code red emergency notifications as well as report a concern. If you miss a city council meeting or unable to attend in person and want to keep up with what is going on with your city government, you can visit our city YouTube channel where all meetings are streamed and recorded.
Are there any questions?
Is there a, I have one question. Sorry. Cutting short there. Is there a process that we do replace computers like every two years, three years, or is it as needed?
Some of it is as needed, but on a schedule, we try to replace them every four years.
And then when we do dispose of them, is it through too much volume? Is it through just under a value and sign off on it and get rid of it? Or is it, do we have to put it govdeals.com?
So what we do is we try to salvage any parts that we can. We'll take out any of the RAM or, you know, any of the valuable parts that's in there that we could use on other equipment. And then we bring it before City Council to dispose of as state law allows. And sometimes if we feel like we can get some money for it, we will put it on GovDills. If not, we have to recycle it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
City Manager's Operational Report.
Just a couple of brief items, Mayor and Council. We did receive our 2023 preliminary total from the Appraisal District. We use this and try to start forecasting exactly where our levy will land as well as what sort of change there was from the previous year. And I just, to let you know, until we get a certified role from the Appraisal District, we won't be able to actually look apples to apples versus appraisal versus 22 to 23. We did get advice from the Chief Appraiser that there are about 1,150 properties under protest. That was as of the time of the publication of this memo. The taxable value does appear to be a double-digit increase, 13.1% at this point. And as a reminder, council has generally and statutorily responded to increases in appraised values by the lowering of the city's tax rate. And there are two components to your tax bill, your appraised value and your rate that the taxing entities put on you. So Yvonne, do you know when we might get a certified? Okay, so sometime late next month, we should have a much clearer picture of where we land. Hosted House.
One question while we're on appraisals. Are they factoring in what's going on out of the state? Is that going to be as far as homestead exemption? I know that can come into play as far as values. Are they waiting until the election or our local central appraisal district to see if we're going to have it on the general election? Or is this just the role, the value they're going to stay with?
This will be, my understanding is that they will take into account the current statutory requirements, but not anything that has yet to be enacted by the legislature. Is that accurate? And I don't know how that will impact, you know, it seemed like the legislature was really looking at, you know, school districts as opposed to other taxing entities. So I don't know, it's, they're going to be making sausage and I don't know what it's going to turn out to be.
Does that look like an uptick in protest?
I would have to double-check that number. Certainly, we heard loud and clear, well, I mean, everybody, you know, I got my appraisal and it was up. It was up 50, 60%.
Yeah.
And of course, they can only go up to 10% on your levy. But yeah, it's, when I talked to Susan, she didn't seem shocked that they only had 1,100, you know, that they had 1,100. But I don't know how that compares to the previous year by example. I would think that this has been a year where everybody has seen significant increase in their appraised value. And of course, just like I just said, appraisals go up and that will usually cause our tax rate to go down. So we'll just have to see where it all falls out. We can get an answer to your question, though. Hostess House, we did, I do want to report, we did have a productive meeting with the architects on June 14th. Again, we tried to discuss a number of things on the scope, including the elimination of all ad alternates plus some more items that were included in the base bid, the modification of the footprint, keeping the ground level posts, which would allow us to not do as much structural beef up to that ground level. And then also the elimination of pool level changing rooms. We did talk about also providing contractors more latitude in the starting time as well as leniency for time to complete. I think that was one thing that was mentioned to us, is it seemed like a fairly short window. Again, I think it was a productive meeting. Our goal, and I think the goal of council, as we've heard it over the last several months, is to bring the building up to code and get it back in service. Not necessarily going full out on it or to the extent that that highest design value got us from the previous bid, but something that is affordable but would allow us to get that back in public use as soon as possible. We will plan on reporting to council further on that. And I believe Reliance Architecture is planning on being here July 10th to discuss that with council as well. Job Fair, Stacy reports a reasonably well-attended job fair at the Calvert Building, June 14th. It was an event that was sponsored in conjunction with Workforce Solutions in the Lampasas County Chamber of Commerce. Seventeen employers attracted about 50 job seekers. And I think Stacy is already trying to brainstorm ideas for next year about maybe ways to increase participation, not only from employers, but to attract job seekers. Miss anything, Stacy? L E D C meeting met on June 21. A fairly light agenda. We did take a look at year-end projections and based on very positive sales tax revenue, it appears that the EDC will probably end the year about 200,000 better to plan net. We also presented an initial balanced FY '24 budget with a slight surplus. We imagine that this will be a topic for the L E D C board over the next We imagine that this will be a topic for the LEDC board over the next couple of meetings, very similar to council. We'll talk about it and then by the end of August, be ready to provide council with the budget. So after board approval, so that council can approve their budget. Also took a look at some zoning and land use regulations. We also, in Stacy's report, she highlighted a number of business retention visits. The discussion with the staff from the Governor's Office of Economic Development and Tourism and a number of different training opportunities. It was a much lengthier list in her report than I give it credit for, but is there anything of substance I missed? Road projects, Ryan Carlos.
I have some real quick.
Oh, go ahead.
Has there been any, like, is there any movement with any businesses towards a business park?
There's a movement, but there's a lot of pieces that need to be replayed. So we're gonna continue to work towards the, where they're at and then also like the circumstances with that baby. But in regards to converting, anything I comment?
Road projects, Ryan Carlos report. Although we have already kicked off our paving program for the year, it really kind of jumps to a new level this week when, when the hot mix contractor, Texas Materials, will be in town. They'll be doing some work to mill and overlay between, in between second and third. Briggs overlay, some work on Western and Mill and Overlay Sunrise Hills Approach. They've been doing a number of chip seal projects and will continue to do so, particularly in the Hillcrest and Hollywood neighborhood and on Naruna Road. Also have done work out at Wildwood Acres. So that program continues and there'll, there'll be a lot of, a lot of folks running around town in the next week or so. They're probably here four or five days.
Hopefully it'll be done by the end of the week, so we've got about four days.
Any, any, anything I missed? Council, have any questions on that one? Staff's pleased to recognize the following employees who began their City of Lampasses careers in June. Joe Adams, 21 years. Danny Donovan, 13 years. Josh Reams, two years. Luann Turner, seven years. Sean Schroder, 16 years. Sean Campmire, two years. Adrian Torres, one year. Anthony Ressa, two years. Dave Patty, 14 years. And Dave has just announced his retirement, so he'll be with us, I think, through spring ho. Yeah, end of July. Rachel White, three years. Jeremy Herring, three years. Joe Levine, 16 years. K.A. Morris, one year. Abel Palacio, six years. Morris Wilkins, four years. Gary Spoor, 18 years. And Elizabeth George's one year. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Finley. I just had a few comments. I just wanted to thank our staff and for you guys' hard work. It's, it's amazing from the perks that I sit and watch the dedication from the lowest guy on the totem pole to the, to the top of the guy. You guys are, are working hard. It's, it's been a complete honor for me to work with you guys. Also, sit and watch our citizen and how much that they care and love this town. And kind of what's been going through my mind here is, is partnership. The power of partnership. And what that means to me is, number one, we invest in people, the three Ps in partnership. We invest in people and, and all that you do. And we have that partnership with one another through the city and through the people. And then we have our platform and we know as the day is ahead of us, we've got growth coming at us. And, you know, sometimes we get excited, sometimes get overwhelmed about what's coming down the pike. But I think, I think what we have right here was we've got a great team and, and I just want to say, I appreciate you guys. All that being said, we will go to discussion and possible action to accept proposal from Central Texas Valet in the amount of $20,000 for parking management for the Solar Eclipse on April 8th, 2024.
Well, thank you for those kind words, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item has been placed on the agenda to secure rates for parking control management at the 580 Sports Complex during the Solar Eclipse event, which is on that Monday, April 8th, 2024. And the park, it will include parking attendance, equipment needs and security guards. And it's, we propose that it be manned from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We got quotes from three different companies. We got a quote from Central Texas Valet that was for $20,000. One from Texas Traffic and Barricade for about $11,985. And a third quote from AWP, which is area-wide and protective. They quoted $16,140. Staff does recommend that we go with Central Texas Valet. They're gonna be providing 10 parking valets and a traffic control manager, 12 security guards for safety and crowd management. We do recommend to go with them because they do have more experience in this industry. The other one, the other firms are more well-versed in, in event management, so doing marathons, so managing individuals, people, conducting them through the marathons. But Central Texas Valet, they specialize in traffic management and parking the cars. And in this type of event with Lampasses, and it could be a little chaotic with the Solar Eclipse event, we do recommend going with them. They're also gonna be packaging it with security guards. Traffic, Texas Traffic and Barricades, they weren't able to do that. AWP was, but AWP and Texas Traffic and Barricades couldn't do a online, they couldn't take payments or do a payment system. But Central Texas Valet will be able to provide the security guards, traffic management, and be able to take payments so that we can possibly recoup some of these funds. So that being said, we, staff does recommend that we go with Central Texas Valet to secure parking management costs for the Solar Eclipse event on April 8th, 2024 in an amount not to exceed $25,000. We're gonna continue to try and negotiate with them to try and get the price down. But at this time, coming to council, this is what they put forward and we'll continue to do that, but it should not exceed $25,000. Do you have any questions?
Oh, we'd have to have a motion first.
Just to talk about it, let's say, move to approve the proposal for Central Texas Valet to secure parking management costs for the Solar Eclipse event on April 8th, 2024 in an amount not to exceed 20,000 and to allow staff latitude to negotiate with Central Texas Valet regarding staffing needs, logistics and expectations for this event?
No second.
All right, so Texas Traffic and Barricade, I'm looking at this proposal. You said they don't offer security, but there's $3,600 as part of their bid for security off-duty officers, quantity of four for parking area. And their bid is $8,000 less than Central Texas Valet. I mean, Central Texas Valet is the most expensive here by a lot. And then you're still asking for 5,000 more than even what their bid is. But just a moment ago, didn't you say that there was no security from Texas Traffic and Barricade?
Maybe that is when they added it, but the thing that made me not want Texas Traffic and Barricade is because they can't take payments to recoup some of our costs.
Can't take payments?
Yeah, so what we're hoping that when we have the management company, when they're bringing in the cars, that we can charge for each car to park there. So about maybe hopefully $30 to $50 to help recoup our funds. And that should get us, if we did that, about between $80,000 to $100,000 of people parking at 580 Sports Complex to help recoup what we're spending on the traffic management company. They're not gonna take any cut of the prices, all of it will go to us. But if we went with Texas Traffic and Barricade, then they don't have a system to be able to do that. We can provide it.
Can we put someone in the entrance to take payment? I mean, that's eight grand right there.
Yes, and then I would also say, Texas Traffic and Barricade, they've only done marathons. They haven't, they don't specialize in parking and they're, they're a new company. They haven't been together for too long.
Are they insured?
Yes, they, they would all be insured, but.
And, and we're talking about direct and parking in a big field at the 580 Sports Complex?
Mm-hmm.
I just don't see it. I mean, I don't know.
I'm on the same page.
Yeah, the number, the other one, we are getting more, more for our money.
We get two more security guard or what? We get eight more security guards, but still it's $8,000 more. I just don't see the, where, where it gets made up there, I mean personally.
Staff recommends Central Texas Valet, but if you'd like us to come back and recommend somebody else, we can certainly do that.
I just kinda wanna hear what everyone else has to say up here.
I think we're spending too much already, but that's, and I'm not talking about just this particular issue, but it's a very expensive event.
And I get we, we gotta spend money to make sure everything's safe and, but. Blows my hair back.
Chris, I'm gonna put you on the hot seat, but is, I know we're getting fencing and some of the other things for the irrigation systems, but what, where would the parking primarily be done at?
Parking would all be in the current parking lots that were available, that are striped, and then 12 acres on the west side of the, at the west entrance of the park.
Like where people park during cook-off and the, and the rodeo and whatnot?
Approximately 2,000 parking spaces, yeah.
About 2,000?
Expected about 12,000 attendees.
12,000 people parking over there?
No, 12,000 attendees, but.
So that's approximately a couple of thousand cars, is that right?
At $40 a car or $40 a person?
I think we can come back to staff, to council to determine a price.
Should be a car, because if you tried to a person.
Yeah, it would be per car. I would recommend that, but the price of what we charge.
Yeah.
Hundred grand, there'd be 80 grand. About $40 a car, isn't that what you said?
Yeah, between, I would, you could do 30 to 50, or if we do wanna lower it, we can as well.
What do you guys think about the bids?
What's the other, the other big question would be, how big of an issue would it be to have one? I know you don't want anybody constrained as far as their own staff to take payments, but how big, you know, to rent? The, yeah, what do you call it? The, you know, like the law, the car hops they have? Square, yes. So you have somebody there, because, I mean, if you do cash only, you gotta have a guard there. You gotta have somebody level three or four, because the, the money are unless the police officer, and they're gonna be out doing their job, so they don't need to be there. So that's the big question. How big of an issue would it be if we had one of our own with point of sale or a secure card taking that? But then you run into, how long does it take for that to process? That's why most people take cash on cars, so.
I guess, would there just be two entrances into the place?
Hmm, yeah, square, I don't think would be an issue. If we really wanted to go with Texas Traffic and Barricades, we certainly could. And I think we could set up a payment form with square, but then kind of really what makes, made staff choose Central Texas Valet was just because of their experience purely with that, but.
Does it make sense to do a, like a parking app type deal where people show their cell phones where they paid?
Mm-hmm, that's what we wanna do. And hopefully, if we can get the system in place to where people can pay ahead of time.
Okay.
You know, and I, and I would like to amend my own motion, actually, to come back to council before pulling the trigger on anything, if you're gonna hear more, because it's just, it's not writing that check.
Are we on a time constraint, do y'all feel, with hiring somebody? You know, like everyone else is gonna be hiring somebody, or, I mean, that's the point I'm asking. I know we're months out, but I know we're prepping good here, but do we feel that, you know, this is an issue that we have to decide right now? Or can we discuss it and put it at a later council meeting?
I would say if council is not comfortable moving forward, that we bring it back to you in a couple of weeks. To, I, I can't specifically answer your question because I don't know. Although I know that you can turn on the TV now and, you know, there's, there's more, there's more talk about it. So these types of services will eventually get swallowed up by other communities. I don't know that, at this point, and I don't know, Chief Smith, if you might comment, but I don't know at this point that anybody is like ahead of us. We, we seem to be as prepared as any other community is along our corridor. But that being said, somebody could.
Right. Seems like there's just a lot more questions than answers that we have at this time, so.
Staff would be happy to bring it back.
Mm-hmm, staff would be happy to bring it back and just put it forward.
Don't we just table the motion? Or just let it die? Okay.
So the motion dies. Okay.
Can we come back on the 10th of July, though?
Yeah, we can do that. And kind of what makes this cost so expensive is also having staff out there from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So we can also consider changing the times of them being out there.
Do you see more of a breakdown of why it's, there's such a difference in price?
Mm-hmm, I'll, we'll bring it back on the 10th.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Discussion, possible action regarding lap swim fees.
Mayor and Council, this item was discussed during workshop. Obviously, staff's gonna support whatever decision council and the mayor comes up with, but I think three things to consider is we could take no, no action at all and keep it at the $40 per month as it is. Or we can consider a motion to modify the fees on a per-use basis, like we do a daily fee at the pool, or modify the fees based on seasonal, a pass, a season pass. Y'all've got the hard job. Y'all come up with a number, we'll enforce it.
Man, I'm just gonna throw it out there, I'd move to modify the fees to 10 punch card for $25.
You said, you said what? Now say that again.
10 punch pass for $25.
So 25, 30, a calendar or a month?
No, that would just, that would be a punch card. You come anytime during the season.
Right.
So it'd be $25 for 10 visits. Is that what you're saying, Zach?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
It's kind of what we have, yeah.
Well, the $40 a month is 250 a visit, but.
Right. And that's where we're at right now.
That's where we're at now.
A second tax motion.
I'm just throwing it out there, what, what do y'all, what do y'all wanna do? What, what are you, what are you thinking?
I'm opposed to changing it because I think we've already expended a large amount of money for guards and management and everything else that is in the cost to the, to the citizens right now. And a lot of them do not go to the pool to swim every day. So it's one of those things, if you wanna keep it in force, you gotta pay the price, like taxes and everything else. It's gonna go up.
That's a good point.
The, the big difference is obviously they're paying for an opportunity to use the pool in one situation and they're paying only when they actually use it in another situation. And, and I think like Mr. Iker said, this is, this is something that's, we're, we're not gonna balance our budget based on what we charge folks to swim at the pool and we'll continue to operate, you know, as usual, regardless of what this fee is, so.
So what, it's about 12 people using the, using that, and so 15 bucks, and yeah.
So it's at 250, basically 250 a visit currently, right?
Yes.
It's just, you know, like Finley was saying, either buying it all at once or as, as you use it.
Well, I'd, going by what Mr. Williamson said, everything has gone up, and not every citizen in the city uses the pool.
Correct.
I mean, I, if we did a per-use and went up per-use, say a dollar, three fifty, I mean, I think that helps people that are using that facility to pay a little extra towards it.
So you, or, or, what I'm hearing from you is you would rather just do a, a per-use, just pay three fifty anytime you wanted to come? No punch card, no monthly fee, no...
What?
We, we have like th, three motions going right here.
Perfect.
I think this... Okay. Zach's going to die right now.
No, it's, he got a motion in a second, so...
Twenty-five, right?
So just vote on it and shoot it down if you don't want to do it and keep on going, or...
Doesn't make any difference to me.
So we just vote on it?
All right. Who, we're voting on which motion?
First one, first one.
First one, voting on Zach's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It was a tiebreaker.
Tiebreaker.
I'm going to oppose.
Next motion?
What was the next one?
I guess it's Councilman Williamson down there.
Is that raising it up?
I said I think it's, we need to stay with what we have.
Uh, forty a month?
Forty a month? That's my personal opinion.
I mean, whatever, but season's almost over.
Right.
I mean, you know, come on, guys.
Can you make a motion on that?
Well, that would be back to take no action, keeping the fees for, for thirty days in effect.
Forty dollars per month.
All in favor?
We need a second on it, though.
Oh, second? Anybody have a second? That one dies.
Third motion?
I'm going to make a motion for a per-use visit at three dollars and fifty cents.
Second?
Lack of being here, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So we got a tie.
I'm down the mayor.
Nay.
So nothing's been accomplished.
No. We got to do our job.
So... I would move to take no action and just leave it how it is, then.
Can we leave it as is, take no action?
That's pretty well what we have to do unless y'all change it. That's what I, we're bound by the ordinance as, as it reads right now, so it's forty dollars a month right this minute. Am I correct, Finley?
Okay, so we'll leave it as is?
Don't have to make a motion, take a no action, keeping the fees per thirty days in effect.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Yahoo.
Thank y'all. And not out of defense, but just to clarify and just give you some facts, at the Moonlight Swim, we actually had nine guards on the deck. The manager was present, we did have a head guard present. There were some lighting issues, but that's back to the hostess house thing. Uh, we could not get the, what, the lights on the north side of the hostess house to work, so. But we had adequate staffing.
And, and with that, Chris, did, did the, like Ms. Lawson, was that her name? Did she bring that to anybody's position or y'all's?
She wasn't even at the event.
I, I think, you know, I mean, with, with the city, did she come in and make a complaint and then? Or is this the first time we've heard of, okay?
Nor did I.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Seven point three, discussion and possible actions concerning the audit engagement letter for the City of Lampasses' current fiscal year, which begin October first, 2020, and will end September, 2023.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our annual engagement letter from Singleton Clark that does our audit every year. Um, it is still including a single audit. Um, when you get over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal money, they do a single audit. And you may receive all the money at once, but they have to track all the expenditures, and it may be two or three years to track all of those expenditures while we still have the single audit going. Um, it is up thirty-six hundred from last year, which really is a, a pretty reasonable price.
I'll make a motion to approve engagement of Singleton Clark and Company, PC, to perform fiscal year 2023 audit in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Seven point four, discussion and possible action regarding approval of funds from joint use faculty account, facility account to purchase and install a generator at the Highway one ninety-five pump station that services the Ivy Mountain tank, which is supports by Kempner and Lampasses.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to bear with me just a little bit while I, uh, guide you through this account, how it came to be, what it can be used for. Uh, basically, as a result of our negotiation of the two thousand and six contract, as well as Kempner acquiring some of Central Texas facilities that serve both Kempner and Lampasses. Uh, at, at the time, Texas Water Development Board, in fact, they still do, if you have a loan with them, they require you to keep certain dollars in reserve. At the time of those, some of those facilities were acquired, they were paid, they paid those notes off, and then that re, reserve was released on those items. The entities, what they decided to do is put that money in what they called a joint use base account. And that base account, drawing interest, funded, uh, in part, the joint use facilities account. This is a count that is in the custody of Kempner Water Supply Corp. Uh, by contract, they are responsible for reporting to us on the balances, et cetera. You do have a copy, uh, within your packet of the current statement of, uh, both the joint use facility fund as well as the base account fund. Uh, you also have an email request from the new general manager of Kempner regarding the use of those funds, uh, quotation for generator only, uh, and an excerpt from the two thousand and six wholesale water contract that identifies the uses and purposes of that fund. As it states, "The fund may be used with approval of the city and Kempner Water Supply Corp for the purposes of benefiting joint use facilities." And I, I know not all of you have been out to the one ninety-five pump station. Uh, Chuck has and, and, uh, maybe Herb, have you been out there? But this is probably, aside from the water treatment plant, is probably the most important piece of infrastructure in terms of pushing water to not only Kempner, but also to Lampasses. That pump station fills Ivy Ma, Mountain Ta, Tank, which by and large provides a head pressure all the way here to Lampasses. Uh, the request is, uh, consistent with the purposes of the contract. Um, and staff, uh, certainly, uh, feels like this is a worthwhile expenditure out of the joint use account. Kempner will be taking this up with their board, uh, later this week, I believe on Wednesday, for their meeting. Uh, I would be happy to, uh, answer any questions. We, we think it is a reasonable request from Kempner Water Supply Corporation.
Move to approve use of joint use facilities fund for the purpose of installing emergency generation at the one ninety-five pump station, a facility critical in the delivery of water to Kempner Water Supply Corporation in the City of Lampasses, amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Looking at those balance sheets there, or, or the, the statements?
Correct.
That first one, it, it shows like a hundred and eighty-nine, or a hundred and eighty-three, and the next one? What, what is the difference between those two?
One is the base account, so the one is the, we take the interest off the base account, and it helps to fund the joint use facilities account, which is the five hundred and fourteen.
And that's what that money is there for, is this?
Correct. The last time we used it was, uh, when we did the rehab on the Georgetown tank. Uh, and Kempner, the Kempner Board and City Council said, let's take, let's ease the amount of operating fund expenditure for both entities, let's take two hundred thousand. And I forgot how much that project was, I think it was about an eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollar project, all in all. So that just kind of lessened the, the impact on your operating funds by use of these, the, this, uh, joint use facilities fund.
The cost of this generator we're looking at is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Correct, that's a, that's a, I, I don't know if that generator is still available. I, I don't, uh, I don't disagree with the methodology that Kempner's proposing, is finding a low-hour use generator, something that has good service records on it. That generator may be available, but something in that ballpark, I think, is what, uh, Mr. Sorenson was, was, uh, providing an example for. Hopefully, that's what it would be. Uh, doesn't include any of the switchgear and, and electric, uh, installation, but, uh, yes, that, I think that's an accurate example of what he's trying to do.
We're trying to use existing switchgear, right?
Some of that, but transfer switch, et cetera.
And, and just so I understand, this is not on our budgeted items?
That is correct, and just to be clear, uh, this is not something that we're contractually obligated to do. As part of our normal operating budget, or our normal O and M budget, we don't provide funding for capital items, as, as a, as a matter of the contract. What the contract does say, though, is you've got this pool of money out here you can use for anything that's a critical facility for both parties. And so that's, I, I think it certainly aligns with the contract's intent.
Okay. We could consider a lower amount than four hundred thousand, though?
Uh, you could, yes. Uh, and, and certainly, if, if it was more than, by example, three hundred thousand, if it was more than that, we could bring it back to council and, uh, you could, you could make that, make that change at that time. And certainly, the, the motion, as count, as, as staff reads it, is we, we, we only, we only pay for, uh, the amount of the generator and the connection, generator and installation. So if it was two hundred and fifty, that's all we would pull out of the joint use facilities funds.
That's just latitude in the four hundred, just to...
Correct.
Have more room to work in there, but it's not saying like, okay, hey, we're going to go spend four hundred thousand dollars on this.
That's correct.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Discussion possible action regarding Lampasses' central appraisals district, uh, twenty twenty-four budget.
Uh, Mayor and Council, on June twelfth, uh, you received through my report a copy of the LCAD budget. Uh, at that time, as you may recall, we indicated, uh, it, as did the budget, indicated that was about a twelve, a little over a twelve percent increase. Uh, we do note that of that twelve percent, a little over eight percent of that was from software that, uh, council may recall being talked about over a year ago. So, uh, we knew that, uh, and, and I think a lot of the taxing entities understood that they were a little deficient in some of their software, um, and their ability to, uh, uh, provide, I think, the information that the taxing entities needed. We did, uh, review the budget, uh, at least as staff, uh, it has been, uh, provided to council previously. You have the choice of, uh, uh, consider, uh, either approval, uh, or in the alternative denial, and if you take no action, uh, then that is considered approval. No action is, is the same as, as approving it. Uh, one thing that I think, just to be clear, too, my understanding, it, it, there's a little confusion. When you, when they appoint board members, um, they ask for approval from the taxing entities, uh, based on a ratio of their levy. So the school district gets two thousand votes, we get a hundred votes, and, you know, everybody else. But in this case, I believe each taxing entity has a, has a singular vote. Um, in review of the budget, we don't, staff doesn't have any, uh, objection to it. We did talk to a couple of others, or at least one other taxing entity, and, uh, they, they had a similar opinion, but, uh, we would certainly ask for your consideration, um, to either approve or, or in the alternative deny or approve by taking no action, the LCAD FY twenty twenty-four budget as presented.
Move to deny the LCAD FY twenty-four budget as presented? Your second?
Mayor? Do you second it, Mayor? Okay. Oh, is there a second?
There is no second? So that motion dies? Do we have another motion? To approve?
I'll make a motion, take no action.
Your second?
Second.
So Finley, would most of the time, someone from the appraisal district come over here and present their budget?
They absolutely could.
And that's my hangup right now, is...
Since we have a motion, who's this other entity that, is it the county?
County school.
Did the county already approve, or...
Uh, I don't believe the county has taken this up well. Uh, they may have taken it up this morning.
That's what I was trying to remember, yeah.
I didn't know if it was on the agenda for their, uh, but we can certainly invite them, and I'm sure they would be happy to bring a board member and staff as well, but...
I'd just like to hear more about it.
Sure.
So the motion on the table is no action. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I said aye.
He said aye, sorry.
So the motion carries, no action?
I'll vote.
So that means it gets approved?
Well, I guess the main question is, how would we get them to come over with this motion, I guess, is the...
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'd be, I'd be happy, and, uh, I am sure that they would, would be if they could. So, uh, we'll extend the invitation if that's, if that's...
By taking no action, do we just approve it? So if we approved it, what's the point of them coming now?
Right.
So I, there is a window. I believe you have thirty days, uh, but I would want to double-check that. So if, for, and again, this, I'm speculating here, but, uh, if it was within a window, there is arguably the opportunity for you to approve or to deny.
Make that happen, you think, or try to?
We'll, we'll absolutely invite them at the next council meeting.
All right. Seven point six. Discussion and possible action regarding traffic management scope and expectation during the solar eclipse event, April tw- June.
So moved.
Council? All in favor?
Aye.